February 2025 School Committee Meeting. I am sitting in for Gabe tonight. He is unable to be here. And it's been a few years since I've done this, so I'll try not to mess it up too badly. We will begin as we always do with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and infinite, just as per-
Thank you all. All right. I'm going to read the mission statement for the Danvers School District. "Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television." Is anybody in the audience recording these proceedings? Okay, no indication that anybody is recording, so we'll move right into our agenda with items of interest from the superintendent, school committee, or public. Anyone on the-
Yep, I do have one quick thing. I just wanted to congratulate everybody that was involved in the Newsies production over the weekend. So I happened to catch all the shows and just Ms. Russell and her team did an amazing job with all the students. The students, I mean, it was so impressive to watch what they did. So just, that was my first time going to see that one, and I thought it was amazing. So everything from the middle schoolers, you know, actually performing, and then the high schoolers came and helped with audio/video. It was, it was just a great production. So I just wanted to congratulate and thank everybody for their hard work on that.
That's excellent. They've put on some terrific shows over the years here, and it's always, always fun to go. All right. Anyone else on the school committee with an item of interest? Mike?
I'd just like to let everyone know that I attended, along with Mr. Crane, the Black Excellence Dinner this past weekend, hosted by the HRIC. Fantastic turnout, great jazz music from a bunch of young performers, a lot of good conversation, and it was just really great to see the room, the room filled, and the food was fantastic. So I'll let you know.
Yeah, it was a terrific program and lots of fun, lots of good people to talk with. And let's see, anything from you?
Yeah, I'm the scorekeeper and announcer at the basketball games. I just want to congratulate Dave Chisholm and the girls' basketball team for qualifying for the state tournament this year. They've been fun to watch this year. Boys are having a pretty good season, too. They're going to be cutting it close, but congratulations to them for qualifying.
So, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I have a couple of quick items. First of all, I would like to thank our school counselors. Last week was School Counselors Week, and they provide so many services for all of our students. And they're a wonderful group, and we're so lucky to be blessed with just a strong group that care for our kids, are professional and dedicated. And as a former principal, I know they're really the backbone to help our students that may be struggling or those that need a little more direction. So thank you to all of our school counselors. And tomorrow is the 100th Day of School. Supposed to be yesterday, but, or today, but we had a snow day last week. I was over at Highlands, and they kept their 100th Day today. It's just interesting to see how, you know, you can't take anything for granted. You know, our students are like sponges, and they wore vests that indicated the 100 things they've learned so far this year, and just seeing our young students and the pride out of our staff as well. So congratulations to our young learners. And again, we're blessed with the performing arts, the Newsies. I've heard just nothing but rave reviews and just bravo to that group, so.
I would like to add one more item to last week's statement that we spoke in support of our students in terms of how we would handle if there's ever any questions of student records and our immigrant students. And I just really want to reiterate the sense of belonging and how important it is in our school community. And we value every child and staff member in our community. And our schools, we're an inclusive community of learners that's respectful of individual differences. Our all students are valued for their unique skills and talents, and challenges are thoughtfully and effectively addressed. A welcoming environment for students and families is evident, and diversity is valued and celebrated. And core values are the underlying support of our mission, visions, and goals, and therefore provide a shared foundation of working and learning. One of our core values is caring. The district believes that a child-centered environment that demonstrates value and respect for individual differences best serves the unique needs of our children. In order for students to thrive, it's essential that we have a strong sense of belonging in our schools. For a sense of belonging cannot be built upon a single experience. It's multiple experiences every moment, every day in the school, whether it's transportation to and from school, the classroom experience, extracurriculars, the cafeteria, and just many of the other lives and areas of our school life. It's each and every day that builds our sense of belonging. And as educators, it's our duty to create a learning environment that's free from hate and safe for all. We stand strongly against any discriminatory practices that may impact any child's sense of belonging. These include rhetoric and actions that target immigrant, transgender, non-binary, and LGBTQ members of our community. Not only is this a duty fundamental of our profession as educators, it's the law. And our, our school district will continue to uphold our legal responsibility to create an environment free of discrimination and implement policies that respect the dignity and every right of every child and every staff member. As this is the case for many years, Massachusetts State Law and our Department of Education have regulations that guide our policy that ensure public education provides opportunities for every child regardless of race, religion, gender, socioeconomic status, ability, or social identity. Together, we can uphold every child's right to free and public education, every child's right to an education free from harassment, and every child's right to an education free from discrimination. Thank you.
Nope. Okay. I would simply say that I appreciate the position that we're taking. I think you have the support of the community in this. And, you know, a country's greatness is measured by what we do, not how much money we make, and how we treat the least of us, children, older people, people who are not, you know, as, as high on the economic ladder as, as some others in this country are. And the measure of a country's greatness is in how we treat our people. So we appreciate the commitment that you are making to the children of this district. And I think it's one we all share. All right, we will move on to, I'm sorry, items of interest from the community. Anyone wish to say anything? This is your chance. Okay, seeing none. We will move on to student representative reports.
Hello, everybody. So today, we are going to talk about some of the elementary schools and the middle school. So last week, we wanted to just highlight Great Oak. So last week, the PAC helped students and families donate items to the food pantry, and they held this theme of Sweet and Spicy. They had a really good turnout with that. And then they are going to be celebrating their 100 Days of School tomorrow, on Tuesday, February 11. Next week, we are going to look forward to a musical journey through the Caribbean that they are holding there. And then at the end of the month, the kindergarten students are going to have the opportunity to see the unveiling of Snow Force One, and that is submitted to the mascot and one on behalf of Drake Hamlin and the kindergarten class at Great Oak.
Busy past month at Highlands. So they had their chorus chimes and band winter concert that was run by Mr. Gall and Ms. Bailey. Last month, they held a food drive that helped support the Danvers Food Pantry. This revolved around collecting boxes of cereal. In order to help engage the school, they played cereal box dominos, which sounds a lot of fun. They had 650 boxes of cereal that was collected. They continue to come together on their Wednesday afternoon meetings where they focus on the Highlands High Five. That basically reminds all students, be kind, be safe, be a hard worker, be creative, and show integrity. Along with those meetings, they're continuing with their Classroom Buddies program. Last month, a meteorologist and Danvers resident, A.J. Burnett, visited Highlands and spoke to the students about weather. And at the end of the month, the Danvers High School hockey players that formerly attended Highlands came back to read to the students for Hockey Reading Day.
Over here at the middle school, they had their band and chorus winter concerts. They had really good turnout for that. And eighth grader John Beasley represented the middle school and Danvers at the statewide Project 351 Leadership Day in Boston. The Skane Train siblings, Jackson and Taylor, also visited our sixth graders to talk about disability awareness and education. And then our seventh graders got to visit the Peabody Essex Museum as a part of their ancient civilization curriculum. And then we also just wanted to point out again the amazing drama club performance that they had with Newsies Junior.
This is from Oversight. They also had their band and chorus concert. See a pattern there? That was run by Ms. Dennett and Ms. Bailey. The fourth graders gave an inspiring presentation on what it means to be their best selves, on which emphasized how pride is about putting forth their best effort every day. And their SD progress has reached an impressive 60%. And finally, they've been putting forth incredible fundraising efforts to make a new playground a reality with hopes of construction this summer.
And then over at the Smith School, students are working on a project called Love and Humanity. Each grade level is learning about a special human, whether it's past or present, who has made an impact on our world. And then each grade level will be presenting and teaching the school about their special person during the February Bulldog Gathering. Students will get very creative with this presentation, and this project coincides with Black History Month and also Women's History Month.
And last but not least, we have Thorpe, who also had their winter concert last week. The chorus performed five songs that all tied in together, the Tiger Five. And they have an upcoming, upcoming show on March 19th where all students are invited to showcase their talents. That's all we have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for our student representative? We have lots to report tonight. Thank you so much.
I just want to give a thank you to the DPW for Highlands. They were, they helped pick up the cereal boxes on the dominos and brought them to the food pantry. It's quite an endeavor.
That's awesome.
Awesome report.
All right. So now, Dan, over to you for information from the superintendent.
Sure. Well, we have a great information tonight. We have the legislative update. We have the wonderful Senator Joan Lovely and the wonderful Representative Sally Cairns if they could come up for the legislative update. Wherever you're comfortable. If you want to sit here? Join, join us at the table?
We are always pleased to have you here, and we know how hard you're working up on the Hill, so we're looking forward to your update. I will just alert you to the fact that we have new mics, and you have to press in order to be heard.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Working. Well, good evening, and thank you, as always. Senator and I always love to come and share and listen to what's on your minds. Loved the update from the students. Former Highlands parent, maybe I've mentioned that once or twice. And I remember the 100-day project vividly, and my daughter did quizzicles, glued 100 quizzicles. And then that morning, going into the school, was quite, quite a scene, as, you know, some parents were helping with rather complicated projects that they had brought in, but all very creative. So fun to look back on that. So at the State House, it is now past the legislative filing deadline. We are not yet at the point where we have committees named, but we have passed the filing deadline, which was a bit frantic. And we are now looking at the early stages of budget. So we know that for, for you folks, you're thinking about your budget as well. What's the state going to do? What can we depend on? So we are both very mindful of the degree to which the district depends on the legislature for help. That senior circuit breaker, we'll just dive right into the hard stuff, the circuit breaker, the special education circuit breaker, you know, ranging from instruction and tuition, and then, of course, the transportation piece of it. So it never goes down, and we will be pushing hard, as, as always, to make sure that the committees understand our district. And I find that that's some of the challenge of this role. You know, it's different in different districts. The rural districts have tremendous challenges. Urban districts also have challenges. And we're in, we're not quite the Merrimack Valley. We're not Cape Ann. We're not-
The Berkshires.
The Berkshires. But we are the North Shore, and so we try to just always be educating, well, you know, in Danvers, it means this, in Peabody and Wenham and so forth, Middleton, Topsfield, hope I didn't leave anybody out. So just know that, that, that's a big focus for us. All right, you want to take a turn? You want to do, you want to go on to the-
Keep going, you're doing great.
All right, so the next, yeah, we talked about special ed. All right, so now, just a quick overview. I don't have to tell you and you, because you're running it and running it well, the EA Shelter Program. We debated last week, it wasn't much debate, because there's no question that if we didn't continue to fund this emergency shelter program, the whole thing would have collapsed of its own weight. And so it is February, it's freezing, there is no doubt that we were going to fund the additional funding. There were some restrictions put on the funding. There are now tighter eligibility requirements. I'm quite concerned, I think I speak for both the senator and I, when I say that there will now be more people who are not eligible. And these are women and children, and so I look for continued partnership. And we will then move into our full budget. Remember, this was a supplemental budget discussion, so it was very narrowly defined, right? We weren't talking broadly about every area of the budget. That process now begins, and so we shall see. So that cleared the House.
It's come to the Senate. So the Senate will take up the EA supplemental budget on Thursday. It just came to the Senate this morning, reported out. We have an amendment deadline for Wednesday, for two, tomorrow, a very short amendment deadline. And then we will take it up on Thursday in formal session, and we anticipate, very preliminary anticipation, of also supporting the, the full funding based on, and the House, I read the House proposal today, a lot of, a lot of caps and further requirements to be able to, we really do want to get the EA system, Emergency Assistance System, back down to what it was originally intended for, which is no more than 4,000 family, homeless families to be able to support. And as you know, by history, Governor Tocqueville and the legislature then in the early 80s put that in place, the Right to Shelter Law. And it's intended, its intention was to care for Massachusetts families who become homeless. I will tell you, out of about 60% of the program right now is Massachusetts families who have become homeless, and 40% are documented asylum seekers who are here with federally, legally protected status. Right. Are, are here, and we know that that is families. So parent, parents with, with young, with unemancipated children. So we are, we'll be doing that on, on Thursday, and I don't know what type of amendments will be filed or what the recommendation is coming out of Senate Ways and Means, but it will be, the floor will be the House, what the House has done. And so, and that's to get, as we know, the funding through to the end of the fiscal year, to the end of June, and where the governor is committed to get that back down to that workable number that's been in place for decades now. It just was never intended to be able to take on the amount of families that it did. It was an emergency, that's why they call it emergency assistance, and, but that, that's the plan, to be able to get that back down to that, that workable number. And I will tell you, there's some success stories to this, and I'll use Salem as an example. Salem, Salem State had an empty dorm. It took in 300 families, so about 1,000, 1,200 people. And, and it actually started the summer before, really, the kind of the onslaught started, like the August before. And those families were supported. They were supported with English second language, both at, at the site and at a site in Lynn where they were transported over. Every adult was able to get their working papers, every single one, because they wanted them. And they, that dorm, that closed a year ago, or last June, June of '24, because it was contracted for that amount of time, about a year and a half, about 16, 18 months. And to end, many people went to work at Salem Hospital. Salem Hospital finally had a full census of workers in the laundry, in food service, in the, you know, those jobs that they weren't able to fill. So Salem Hospital's at a full census of, of employment now to be able to support the one regional hospital, really, on the North Shore besides Beverly. And I'm a Beverly girl, so my kids were born in Beverly Hospital. But, but Salem does take care of Lynn and really a bigger region. So there's some success stories to this, that people are here wanting to be able to work and be self-sustaining. And so all of those families are out in supported housing. They're out of that shelter, in that shelter. And so they're further looking at some of these motels to not be shelter, providing shelter services as the system kind of weans down. And so that's the EA and how we're trying to get it back to where it was, while we're also supporting families, homeless families that need our support in a very difficult housing crisis that we have. That's, that's based on that. And we also wanted to just share with you the School Bus Safety Enforcement Act that the governor just signed at the beginning of January. It's being piloted in Peabody. Rep. Kearns and Rep. Walsh have, and myself, worked, worked on this with a Peabody woman who, she really spearheaded it.
She did.
Yep.
Reassuring.
Yeah, and made it happen. And now, both in Peabody and Salem, there are cameras on every school bus. And in Salem, I thought I had the numbers with me, but in just the first few months or over, almost 5,000 incidents of people going by the school bus while it was stopped, and then the thing was out with the arm. So it's each community, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, when I first heard of this pilot, I thought, oh, that's terrible. Someone would go past a school bus, honestly thinking, would be thousands of times. I think in Peabody, 3,412 vehicles that were caught failing to stop for 10 camera-equipped buses just between September and May. Much more than, than I expected. I don't know about you, Senator, but a lot more. I didn't know it was, it was really, the problem was that severe. So towns will have to opt in. The reason we needed the legislation is because there was a glitch where the state required a town to get permission to install them on the exterior of the bus or to install them at all. So this would have to go on the warrant, and so wouldn't be anytime really soon, but the town could opt in. The state is no longer an obstacle to the town opting in to be there.
It's also based not on the operator, but the owner of the vehicle. So it's based on the license plate, who owns the vehicle, no matter who's driving it would be fined. So they, they'll be taking responsibility for that, for those communities that are opting in. So should be a lot more safety around students alighting and, and, you know, getting on and off of buses. We certainly hope so, because we, it's just, well, it was, there was a Peabody mom and two kids who were hit.
Yeah. So, so that, that's sort of a, you know, we like to try to make the state a helpful partner, not a, not a hindrance, and so I file this one in that category. I just did want to give all of you, I have one little, not, just to want to put something on your radar, which is that this is the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution is quickly approaching. There are events planned. There are discussions going on in our town, which is wonderful, among Danvers Alarm List Company, Danvers Historical Society, Chris Hopkins, a teacher at the high school. And I didn't know, Mr. Superintendent, that you were a history teacher yourself. So we're hoping that we'll kind of rope you into this. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes, yes. So, just wanted to put that on your radar. And if you have any, going back to the EA, want to hear your thoughts and concerns as we close this out, that, you know, we continue and we will continue to push for every penny of reimbursement, but the district...
Yeah, two more, two more thoughts. Right, so, the governor released House One, so we have the governor's budget and what her thoughts are. The House will follow, and we release your budget in April, and then the Senate will follow and release that budget in May. So, this is really good timing for us to, we will be meeting with our respective chairs of Ways and Means, Senate and House, to put forward our priorities. And so, this is good timing, because we will incorporate this into our priorities respectively, with our chairs. Second, just want to say thank you to Danvers. When I first got into the legislature in 2013, is when there was quite a large homeless population that was living in our motels and hotels across Massachusetts. And Danvers was certainly impacted, and you took on the challenge with grace and dignity to educate these children and bus them, maybe not from where they, they didn't live in Danvers maybe, but they were in a Danvers motel, and you're busing them back to their home community of maybe Lawrence or Lowell, wherever it was. You took on the expense, and you took on the, and we helped, but you really took it on. And now, we're faced with it again, in a short amount of time later, and you stepped right up. And we couldn't be more grateful, and we know it's hard, and we know we've been in EA bi-monthly meetings for the last year at least, to get these numbers, to hear the impact, to see where we could respond and assist. But Danvers is a really special community, and Peabody too, Salem as well. Danvers is very special, because you had a really, a really large impact, so just want to say, just want to say thank you to all these students that benefit from being educated and being kept safe. Thank you.
And to Mary, in particular.
Yes.
Mary Wurmers, in particular.
All of you.
It is a team, but...
Yeah, it's a team, all of you.
Yeah. Were you here in 2014? You were, yeah, you were, so. I haven't answered any questions.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
Just one, on the bus safety, is there funding that we can tap into for that, or is that something that we would have to fund on our own?
That is on each community to opt in to get the camera, soft cameras and software, and the company is called Bus Patrol. No, the role of the state was to sort of get out of the way, the point of the bill was to get the state out of the business of saying, oh, no, 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 you can't do that. But in terms of funding, because it's not a requirement, it's not a mandate, it's a, if you'd like to do it, here's an option.
Got it. Thank you.
The fines also go back to the community, so it's, that would go into your general fund, not necessarily like into the school fund, but the fines for those would go back to your community. So, there is a revenue source, so to speak, not to pay for it upfront, but that money would come out.
Anyone else? All right, I have a couple. First question, in terms of the bus security. You've got towns like Danvers that basically have a bus contractor, the third-party provider, who comes up, they run the buses. Then you have a town like, a city like Boston or other cities where they have their own fleets, and they do all of the bussing themselves. So, are you, is the legislature, or does the work you're doing contemplate working with the bus companies versus individual towns, where if you have a bus company that works two, three, four different towns, can the cost be shared among the different towns and cities for a bus? You know, you put a camera on a bus, it might serve four communities.
I mean, I would say it should work that way. I mean, I think we're now down to one, one company that does, that will bid for bussing, right? It's Salter, or it's nobody. And so, I think that's the situation.
I think we expect a little more competition this time around, I think, but yes.
Pretty much. And so, I would encourage communities, kind of get together and make a pitch, and say, hey, this is something we would like to do, and can we cost share? And I know in Massachusetts, we, 351 individual communities, and everybody has their own police department and our own fire department, but this is a great example, and an easy one, I would think, to work out a mutual agreement and contract, but I can't speak for the bus company, and I know you can't either. But, very interesting question, to see how they might respond. Would you help us do this, in the interest of student safety?
Sure. And the other question I have, and I'm getting into a dicey area, and I will admit it, but one of the things a lot of school districts are dealing with right now is how to respond to ICE or other federal officials showing up near schools or at schools to try and enforce immigration law, deportations, et cetera. And many, if not all, school districts are trying to figure out, well, what will we do? And where is our guidance? Is the legislature working on that? Do you feel there's already guidance in place? So, I like to ask the simple questions.
Well, it's federal, right? So, I'm not sure the legislature has jurisdiction over ICE and immigration control, but, so, I guess the answer is, I don't know, but it's on everyone's minds. And you know, some communities have come out and said, you're not taking any of our kids, you know, we'll make sure that, Salem, for example, is a sanctuary city. What that looks like, and if it actually happens, we don't know yet. But, it's something we need to engage on to talk about. I think it's, right now, it might, it's so, it'll be three weeks into this new administration, and we're seeing some things that are happening now. I would, I would hope that they wouldn't, you know, ICE wouldn't come in and take children out of classrooms. It would just be horrific. It would just be so traumatic, not only for the child, but every child that witnesses and experiences that.
The trauma would be significant, I would think, yeah.
I would hope that every, I really applaud Mayor Wu for the stance that she has taken, which is to say, you will not remove a child from the premises of our school. And I, I'm blanking on which other community said, they trained their, speaking of buses, they trained their bus drivers to say, and said to them, if ICE comes onto your bus, that child is in your care. And I'm quite certain that the federal government cannot compel any municipality to do ICE's work, essentially. And the idea that a child would come home from school to no parent, I think horrifies all of us, though. I defer to you, Mr. Superintendent, but that would be, we draw a hard line on that.
Thank you. Dan, I feel like...
I do have a few things, and first of all, I just want to say thank you to Sally and Joan for their advocacy for our schools, and giving comfort to a young superintendent, I don't know, not young, but newer in the job, I guess. And certainly, every email, every phone call, every outreach, receive a prompt answer and follow-through, and whether it's the answer we want to hear or not, they're always working very hard for us. And, you know, the EA program, again, thank you for your kind words, and thank you for pointing to Mary for her efforts, and our teachers, and our staff, and our community, they've done a wonderful job, and the feedback that I received is just outstanding, the benefit for our schools, right? And I know just the importance of finishing the financial piece, extending it to the supplemental bill for the remainder of the school year is huge with that 104 per day, because those funds allow us not only to support our students, our newcomers, and those in the shelter program, but all the other supports we put into place that are not in the operating budget that we need. And that has been very, very helpful to us. So, I want to thank you for that advocacy there, because the funding was supposed to end on the 31st of this year, past year, but having it extended is substantial for us, and helps us for advanced planning. So, thank you for that. Also, thank you for the piece in terms, and I know we talked last week in terms of, you know, protecting student rights, and we follow the law. So, the law is very clear and laid out by the Attorney General in terms of, you know, releasing any student unless parental permission, and we have a protocol in place where anybody that would come in that's not a parent or guardian will be sent to my office. And if there's a lawful order, then we'll reach out to our school attorney and take it from there. So, we're very clear on that piece. We provided that information to our staff as well, and, you know, I think, at the end of the day, our schools are very safe, but never, we always need to keep working on that. But I just want to say, continued advocacy, there's two areas that, and I know Pam Crum is here, so, no, I know, she's been working on it, but number one, the piece about circuit breaker reimbursement, right? The tuition, we know, is fully at 75%, which is great. The transportation was earmarked at 44%, and I know there was work to get that to 75% in the supplemental. And that, that difference is about $300,000 in circuit breaker funding that would be beneficial to replenish that fund. So, that's substantial. If that is, if that is still on the table, which we hope it is, we appreciate your advocacy for that, that's substantial money. The special education transportation, not only is it required, but it's that area that you mentioned, very limited contractors, and certainly very difficult to get competitive prices. And we're working as a district with safeguards in that area, but anything you can do to get that 75% of reimbursement would be hugely appreciated by all. The second piece is the Chapter 70 funding, and we're foundational, and I believe it's $75 per student at the foundational rate. If there's ever any way we can get it back to 104 as last year, that's at least $100,000 that would come into our district as well. So, keep an eye out for those possible within that supplemental, if it's making its way to the Senate. We would appreciate any help in both those items. But, again, to underscore the gratitude to your advocacy, and again, your responsiveness to our district, because it does benefit all of our students and families and staff, and we're very grateful for that. That's all I have to share.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? We really appreciate you being here and taking the time, and you're always open and willing to anything, and we appreciate that.
We are, we are. Thank you for the opportunity.
I've got a great partner, this Danvers girl, so, thank you.
This Beverly-Salem girl.
Representative.
We know you've...
Yeah, the revolution, yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's going to be some really... Why not? I've got an extra tri-corner hat set aside for you. All right, be well, everybody, thank you.
Thank you both.
You know how to get us, so do so. Okay, all right.
Mr. Superintendent.
All right, we are blessed to have Mr. Landers here tonight, our Danvers representative to Essex Tech, to provide his yearly updates.
Mr. Landers, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you for having me. I think this is on, the red light is on. This is, I guess, my third time that I've come before you folks to give you an update. I actually heard last year's update, apparently was on like a radio station someplace, must have been pulled directly off of cable, but I'm much better on the radio than in person, that's for sure, I've got a face for radio. But, there really hasn't been a lot of change from last year, in the nuts and bolts of what I usually bring to you folks. In regards to our numbers, this is really good timing. I did get the very preliminary assessment numbers. Our number for next year, or for fiscal year 2026, would be anticipated to be about a 4% increase. I will tell you that that is substantially lower than virtually all of the rest of the communities. And last year, there was, I believe, no community that had an increase to their assessment of more than 10%. This year, there are seven communities that have increases that are greater than 15%, and a couple that are in the range of 30 or 40%. And in the case of a couple of those communities, they are big numbers. Our number will be about $170,000 increase year over year, which is, I think, what we anticipated, more or less, based on last year. And that's based on, basically, a flat enrollment number for us. That enrollment number, which last year was 239, will stay at 239. So, that number is actually a smaller percentage of the total enrollment. We're down about two percentage points from our high point, which was about three years ago. At that point, I think we were about 18% of the total enrollment. This year, we're going to, next year, will be about 16%. And in regards to, we've also closed out the application, the admission process has been closed out, and we had 147 applicants from Danvers. 122 of those kids came from the whole Richmond. And those numbers are down slightly from the year before, at which point I think we had 153 kids who applied. So, our numbers have remained relatively flat from that standpoint. I took a look today at where our kids from Danvers are in regards to the programs, and I guess the easiest way to describe it is, is that they're blended relatively evenly across the board, across all of our programs, and they are proportional in many respects to what you would anticipate by the total enrollment that we have as part of the school. So, in that regard, our kids are taking advantage of all the programs, both the vocational and the agricultural programs. It's important to remember that we have 17 sending districts, those 17 sending districts which Danvers is a part of. Those kids, our kids, have an opportunity to be able to take part in both the vocational technical programs and the agricultural programs. So, when a kid from Danvers goes to the VoTEC, they start their freshman year, they go through an exploratory discovery period, they eventually try to limit that down to three different programs that they'd like to get in. Most kids get into their first program. Virtually all kids get into their, at least their second program, and obviously, they all get into one of the three. And the Danvers kids are no different in terms of their success rate, in terms of those programs. The biggest program, I think, is veterinary, sorry, dental assisting, is our biggest program in Danvers, followed by culinary arts and hospitality. We've got about, we've got about 40 kids in those two programs. But again, it's spread out pretty, pretty effectively. I would tell you that we have two, what I would describe to you as two issues as we face next year. The first one is going to be like everybody else, and that's budgetary. I touched on the fact that many communities, for the first time, in the sending districts especially, are facing substantial increases in their assessments. Three of those communities, I won't mention them, but I think you know who they are, are facing some real serious issues within their overall budget, but certainly their educational budgets. And all three of those communities are facing substantial increases in their assessments. Peabody alone is facing an increase of about $1 million in their assessment this year. So, it'll be very interesting, as we move forward in the budgetary process, the very preliminary, preliminary budget that I saw had an increase of about 4.5%. That's driven, like all budgets in the education, by a new contract that we signed last year. Makes sense, there's a very direct relationship between those personnel costs and the overall costs that we have for the students. And so, it'll be interesting to see if, once that budget is actually presented to our board, our school board, whether there is a little bit more debate and a little bit more budget tightening by some of the member communities. I will tell you that last year, I voted against our budget, and Gloucester voted against the budget. And I would not be surprised if there is more discussion this year, with respect to it. One of the other things, which you may not be familiar with, is our school committee, basically, the 17 sending communities, obviously, each send a school committee member. The towns, like Danvers, that member is appointed by the moderator, and then we are confirmed by the school committee. In the cities, the mayor makes that appointment. In the cities, the mayor makes that, that appointment. So, we are all appointed on the school committee. There are also, I believe, four agricultural members who are appointed by the state. However, even though we have a twenty-one-member school committee, our votes are weighted. So, I get six votes. PBD gets ten votes. I believe the total is forty-six this year. Based on enrollment, it sort of bounces around a little bit. Point being is, if Danvers, PBD, Beverly, and one of the little communities all band together, those four communities can block any vote that occurs. Now, I'm not intending on trying to do that, that's not what I'm saying, but it is a somewhat unique mechanism. And so, when I say, for example, that Beverly and PBD are facing much more substantial budget issues than they have in the past, that has real consequences in terms of the way the vote goes. Because if, basically, PBD, Danvers, and Beverly all join together, you're pretty close to getting the majority right there with it. So, and, and it was sort of funny at our last meeting when we were doing the organizational stuff, people who'd been on that, that, that committee for quite a few years, sort of, we had to approve that. And they were, and none of them realized that was the way it was.[686.12][686.12](laughing) And I sit next, we're, we're in order based on the community. So, I sit next to the guy from Essex, who's a great guy, but he goes, "That's not fair. You've got six more votes than I have?" And I said, "Well, yeah, we have eighty thousand more kids than you have too." So, but that's, that's one issue, is that budgetary issue. The other issue that we continue to, to face, and this is, is a statewide issue, and it's, it's, it's good that both of our legislators are here, because I know they've been actively involved in this as well, and that is a push by the Department of Education to basically place upon vocational technical districts a requirement that the admissions process be through a blind lottery. And I will tell you this from our standpoint. We, as a district, Norsho, Essex-Norsho Vocational Technical District, has worked very hard over the last two to three years to try to improve our admission process, to make sure that our student body is reflective of the communities that we represent. And those communities include places like Lynn and Lawrence, because we are also an agricultural school for the entire Essex County. And we have done a phenomenal amount of outreach, and we've hired individuals to try to make the process, the admissions process, smoother and fairer for those individuals who may come from a home where English is a second language. And as a result of that, I would say to you, and I said this last year, and I would say to you again, that our student body is a, is a model in terms of diversity. And I think that everybody at our school is proud of the fact that we have been able to, without doing any type of, of blind quota system or anything else, have been able to go out and get those kids, good kids, who want to get a vocational education, to apply and to get them into the school. And that's been the focus. And I, and I am personally not convinced that sort of the one-size-fits-all model, which would be what we would get out of a lottery, would actually benefit us at Essex Voc Tech. Now, I appreciate the fact, and I've had, I've said this publicly, there are other districts, other vocational districts, that are not as committed to this. I don't believe that it's fair for our district, which has made strident efforts to be able to improve this, to be placed in the same ballpark with those districts that have not done that. And my feeling is, is to punish the wrongdoers and leave the good doers alone, basically. And I think that that's, that's something in this case. I would also say to you, from a budgetary standpoint, it would not necessarily be advantageous for us in Danvers to face a blind lottery. Because as a general rule, we have more applicants than we do in terms of our actual town population in perspective to the, to overarching. So, so, you know, if there is a concern, and a continued concern, which I think makes sense, that we want to try to make sure that we are not getting crushed with our budget as we did a few years ago, going to a blind lottery without any, especially any ceiling, which there's no intention that there would be a ceiling placed on that, it would have to be floors for some reasons, but there would be no ceiling. We could see those unexpected and sizable increases, again, in our, in our numbers. So, so, from a, from a, just a theoretical standpoint, I think it's, it will not be helpful to us to do this. I also think from a practical standpoint, it could be somewhat harmful from a budgetary standpoint to us in Danvers as well. Bottom line is, is it doesn't appear as though the Department of Education cares in that respect. There is a push on this, and when that push begins, it has its own momentum that sometimes reason can't stop. But, that is the second, what I would describe as sort of problem that we have facing us moving forward. Other, other than that, if I've got any, any questions, I would say, as I say every time that I come here, I think I have two jobs. My first job, most important job, is to make sure that those, that those two hundred and thirty-five kids from Danvers are getting a great education. I believe that they are. Would I love them to be back in the Danvers school system? Yeah. I mean, my, my kids went to Highlands. I also went to Highlands. So, you know, I, I, I value the Danvers public schools and, and the job that they've done for my family for a long time. But, they're getting a good education and a great education at the Voc Tech as well. And for a lot of those kids, they're getting the opportunity to move into a career that is, is really a fantastic opportunity for them. So, that's number one. Number two, I'm not gonna take any credit for it, but I'm pleased to see the fact that we have had some budgetary consistency over the last few years. I think that's been, been helpful for us as well. I would also say that we did have a, what I thought was a really good meeting, town and gown, more or less, to try to, what I described as reset our relationship as the host community. That was an excellent meeting. I, I think that it established some working relationships that I hope will be able to flourish over the course of the next few years. I know there's areas, we're talking about it today, with, with the school buses. We do own our school buses at the Voc Tech. Interesting thought process, right? If you think about it, maybe we can, I don't know how often they stop in Danvers, but if we get them to put, you know, some, some cameras on those, those buses, it sounds like the money would come to Danvers in that situation. So, you know, we might, might be able to work out some type of a deal where we can use those buses at varying times if we're able to put and gain some, some revenue off of those, because it, it also sounds like, from what the senator said, people can't help themselves, but want to pay money to drive by school buses. So, so that's, you know, that I think is, is the next thing. I also will just very quickly say to you, I wear a number of hats in the town. If you've also got any questions about, about the municipal light, also on the municipal light board, and they just reappointed me over my objections, so, I, if, I know we've been working very hard to get the solar panels up and running and working, and I think that's been a really great cooperative effort with the, with the school department. It's not always easy, the negotiations, because of the way we do things here, but I think that's gonna be a really great thing for the town. Those solar panels are fantastic. And then, you know, as I've always said to you, you know, that, that on the finance committee, we can, we continue, at least I continue to believe that it's, it's really important for, to, to support any type of innovative budgetary stuff that you guys are looking to do. And we hopefully can do some for that this year. So...
Any questions? Sure, Mike?
Thank you for being here for the update. In, in the numbers that you shared with us, each class represents about twenty-five percent of those who applied. Is that not the same number that's, we're gonna be looking to send there this year? Is that the number they're gonna be looking for, twenty-five percent of the hundred and forty-seven applicants?
No, no, actually, I think, I think what, generally, what we, what we see on an annual basis is we get about, we've had anywhere from fifty-five to sixty kids on an annual basis. So, so our numbers are probably closer to about a forty-two to forty-four percent acceptance.
All right, so it's consistent with the number of kids, not the percentage?
Right. Yeah, yeah. It's, 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 and, and, so the, so the admissions process that we have, I guess, is, is probably a good way to think of it, is, is that it is not, it isn't a blind process. It's, it is, there are subjective measures to it. And, and basically, one of the things that I know I've, I've, I've talked to the superintendent about, and we, and I've, and I've, both our superintendent and also Heidi, is the idea of trying to, to find ways to work with our guidance staff here, to be able to let those guidance, that guidance staff, work with the admissions process, to say, "These are kids. We know these kids. We've had these kids in our school. Let us give you some insight about who really is gonna benefit from a vocational technical education based on that." And I think there's been some back and forth in regards to that. Certainly, one of the big things that, that the Voc Tech wants are kids who want vocational technical education. And so, a big part of that admissions process is an interview. It's not an interview like we would have going to college or getting a job, but it really is just to get a sense from those kids, you know, "Do you really want to go there because you want a vocational technical education, or you do want to go there because your mom and dad are making you show up today?" And of course, there's always gonna be a part of it, we're talking about eighth-grade kids, but there is no question that that part has been really helpful in terms of getting kids into that school that want that education. And that'd be the part that I would really hate to see go away through, through it. But, you know, we, we basically, in that regard, would see, yeah, probably, probably forty, forty-five percent, but there's no guarantee. You know, it, it could, we could have a hundred, there's enough kids who have applied that our hundred and forty-seven kids from Danvers, none of them get in. And that would be mathematically, statistically, virtually impossible, but there's nothing in the admissions process that says that it has to work that way.
So, for clarification purposes, if they did go to a blind admissions process, it wouldn't be blind for each community, it would be blind overall for all the kids that apply? Really?
Yeah, yeah, there's no, the only part, the only, the only caveat to that, that I would say to you is that there, because you have to pay whether you send kids, we never ran into this problem, obviously, but smaller communities do. There are situations, there are times where I think it's, Essex is one, I think, I think Nahant might be another, where they literally don't have a kid in the class, in a class, but yet they are required to pay a minimum assessment. So, it's unlikely in that scenario, just from a fairness standpoint, that we wouldn't have to have some floor in regards to say, "Well, we, there's gotta be, if four kids from Nahant apply, you gotta take one of them, because we can't, they're gonna have to pay for at least one seat." But, just from a mathematical standpoint, yes. Now, I said this last year, and, and it's, it's, it's part of the weird dynamic, we do do a lottery, blind lottery process for the agricultural. There's a lot of reasons for that. It's, it's a very different scenario for a lot of reasons as well, but that has worked out fairly well, all things considered. But those communities that are involved with that, especially Avril, Lynn, Lawrence, tho- those are communities in which a lot of, a lot of those kids are going to, are gonna help diversify the school. So, you know, that's just the, that's just, you know, the reality of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Any? No? I see Representative Kearns might want to say something.[1437.11][1437.11](laughing) You're welcome to come up. We're all friends here.
No, I...
I'm gonna ask you to come up where there's a microphone, that's all. Just elbow mic out of the way.
Friends, fellow Highlands parents, I went to Tapley, not Highlands. Both class presidents, we have blonde there as well. I just wanted to interject one, which I think is an important component of the discussion around enrollment and admission to the wonderful Aggie. I will always affectionately refer to it as the Aggie. And that is that, unless this has changed, but the criteria for admission are grades, attendance, discipline. Now, as long as those are your criteria to even get into the mix, you are very likely missing kids best suited to this kind of an education. So, I've joined others in advocating for DESI to adopt criteria that are not strictly grades, attendance, and discipline. And I think, because I think that's a bad gatekeeping mechanism. The blind lottery part, you know, I don't know, I, it sounds a little bit, not lazy, but like a little bit like, "Yeah, just throw it in." Whereas, unless we're talking about the grades, discipline, attendance policy, I think we're missing part of it. And I love the idea of getting the guidance counselors, who do know these kids, to say, "Ah, maybe a good fit, ah, but don't let a suspension of a, you know, fidgety, unfocused ten- or twelve-year-old determine that they're never gonna get a shot at what could be the very best spot for them." That's all.
As, as is always the case, my friend from Center Street is so right in her basic opinion on this, but the good news is, is that, is that although those are factors, they're, they are not nearly weighted as much as they were five years ago. And more importantly, especially when it comes to the disciplinary component, the only way that your application is sort of diminished is if you've had a very serious disciplinary matter, basically, that involved the police. So, the, now that, yeah, now, now grades, so I think the other good news with this is, is that, is that what has changed, in my estimation, I've been on the admissions subcommittee for the last three years, and I think one of the things that has changed dramatically, and people probably should know that, this, who are going through the application process there, this isn't the prep. This is not a, this is, this is not an objective mechanism from the standpoint that you, you know, thirty percent is grades and, and an A gets you. It's, it's much more a situation where the, you have to be bad to have points taken off. It's not pluses, that, that makes sense. I, I'm trying to say this nicely, but you don't get points for getting As, but you do lose points for getting Ms. That makes sense to you?
You know, these are twelve-year-olds.
I, I, I understand, and I, and again, I, it's, it's the, but the bigger component that they've, that they've added to this is that application process, is the interview process.
The interview? That's very subjective.
Super-subjective. It's, again, it's, and it's, and I, you know, I, I will say this, when I entered into the process three years ago, I was all for the, the blind lottery. I thought, I thought, "This is just ridiculous." And as I've been brought through the process for the last three years up there, and been part of that subcommittee and watched the process, it's far from perfect, but it's far better than I thought it was. And unfortunately, at least from what I'm getting, and of course, some of my stuff is filtered, but what I'm getting from DESI is, is DESI is not, at this point, interested in doing the heavy lifting, to do what you and I want, which is to try to get the best kids in there. They will just go, what we're being told is they're gonna go the easy way, which is you do, you do the blind lottery. Which, again, I don't think it benefits anyone either, from that standpoint.
Yeah, well, I'll need to get with colleagues who are advocating for the Division of Vocational Education, because...
I think we need to do a workshop or maybe a debate, but...
A workshop.
No debate, no debate. They, no, I, again, I, and I appreciate exactly what Sarah was saying, and I, and I don't think, I, I, you know, I've had long talks with the superintendent on this, and I think that, that I agree with him one hundred percent, and that is that ultimately what we want is kids who, who are gonna benefit by that unique style of education, and especially kids who are unlikely to flourish in the more traditional education that we provide at Danvers High School. And I, and I, and the good news is, is that I do believe strongly that the administration at the Voc Tech believes that as well, and that's what their commitment is. And that's what's good. You know, the... You know, the devil is in the details, for sure, but I do think that as long as everybody is on the same side and board believing what the ultimate goal is, we have a much better chance of getting there. And I think we all agree that that's the ultimate goal, and again, I don't, I don't think, I think what we want to make the point is, it's a blind lottery, doesn't do that. And a entirely subjective, based on, you know, just grades, for seventh graders, is, doesn't make sense either, so, yeah.
Well, we, we appreciate the work that you're doing, Mike, and I just think there's more time in your life to be on more committees, I mean, you're only on like three at the moment, step it up.
I actually resigned from the municipal light board.
You did?
Yeah, which was met with a reappointment letter last week.
Ah, okay, there you go, congratulations.
I don't know how that works.
Look, you're wearing two hats, representing Danvers interests, and also, I think you're truly committed to making sure the Voc is giving the right education, as you mentioned, to our Danvers students, and of course, that extends to all students. And I feel like since you have become the representative to the board, we've turned a corner a little bit in terms of the relationship, and that's a good thing. So, we appreciate what you do, and unless there are other questions, well, uh...
If I could, Mr. Crane, just real quick.
Oh, yeah, please.
Yep, and Mike, thank you again for, your communication's outstanding, and, and I appreciate you saying that, trying to build relationships, and we had a recent visit to, over at Essex Tech, with Heidi and her team, and our high school team, to look for ways to explore the After Dark program, where we can send our students that would benefit from vocational, but yet they love the components of our piece, it's a blend. I've been involved with another districts, and we're looking to see if we can make that work, and then see if maybe there's a reciprocal way that students can benefit from us. The transportation, we're working to see if we can get some inroads on that, but again, it's, it's, I think it's important to note, the commitment to more information, because we would not want to see a student who would really benefit, who's disinterested, and that's why their grades and performance may not be great, but they can really see the spark, and, you know, the tour over there, they got tremendous facilities, you know, there's a strong commitment, so you really have to be committed to do this, because you're in class for one week, and then you're on the site for one week, and it's a lot of, lot of work, so finding that student that really is committed is important, and, you know, and I, and I know that you're working really hard to gear the process so the kiddos have an opportunity to show, you know, what they can do besides what's on paper.
Yeah, I agree, I, you know, again, it's been, I, I would say that it, that honestly, I wasn't all that enthused when I was sort of forced into this position, but I've, I have found of all the things that I've done in town over the years, that this is one of the more rewarding, maybe it's, maybe kids are generally rewarding, I don't want to believe that, but I guess that's probably it.
And I, and I think to a point too, it's having us reimagine like what we're doing at the high school, right, we, we have pathways, we have other exploratory and experiential type learning, that, that really is engaging, and although we can't compete, we're not Essex Tech, but we have pathways where our setting might be better for those, but having some opportunities for kids to gain some credentials, and, and we can work with Essex Tech to help us as we build our programming too, and I think that has helped us at least, you know, level off the curve, in terms of some predictability for the budgetary stuff.
Yeah, I agree, I agree a hundred percent, and I, and I, I can't, you know, obviously, I can't speak to any great extent, the experience before me, I mean, Wayne was an amazing man, and he did a remarkable job in regards to what it was, and, and I would, just to let other people know, just so that, you know, and I apologize for taking up all the time, but we, we, they've just finished up there, sort of a public space, we actually had the opportunity to, 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 to go to the grand opening, and there's a very good chance that when the, when Danvers dedicates the rail trail to Wayne, that the ceremony will actually be up there, which is fitting, because Wayne, in, at the end of his life, and in those last years that he was there, was a huge, huge part of it, and, and when I talked to the people who had served with him up there, you know, they, they just taught the world of him, so they, anything that they, that they could do to help out in that effort, they were more than happy to do, so, you know, I, so I have to try to, every day, live up to that, you know, walking in Wayne's footsteps crap, but, you know, too old for it, at this point. All right, thanks guys, we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any, again, and any, any questions you have, feel free to, to contact me, and, and any concerns that you have with it, we'll, we'll see you in a couple of weeks for the budget.
All right, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, on to our Danvers Cares update, we have Amanda Weber and Laura Meyer here, Whitney McNeely couldn't make it tonight, so we have our presentation on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So I'll control the slides, and just let me know when to turn them.
Should I give you a signal to...
I'll do the best I can.
Awesome.
But thank you, a lot of great work, and I know the last meeting really brought in, you know, the coalition is growing, and I know the opportunities to expand even further, so thank you for all the work that you did.
Thank you. So, hello again, Amanda Weber, social worker at Danvers High School, and also Program Director for Danvers Cares, Laura is joining us tonight.
Hi, everyone, Laura Meyer, I'm a clinical social worker at the high school, and I am the school and community liaison for Danvers Cares.
So, we are going to do our best, we know that it's getting late, to cruise our way through, be really concise in how we present the information, but I imagine that people may have questions, so, you're with us, Laura's going to start, and...
Okay, so, this past October of 2024, we conducted our WRBS, which was offered to all students at the high school, grades nine through twelve, in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. There was an option to opt out for parents and students as well. The survey itself identifies emerging issues at the local, state, and national levels. You can see the areas of focus on the right-hand side there. This survey will support planning and, and the evaluation of school and community programming, and it helps to monitor adolescent health behavior changes over time, which is incredibly valuable to us. So, protective factors form the foundation of wellness, starting in early childhood, which is why we wanted to start with that tonight. We want to emphasize the role of protective factors when looking at decreasing risk for all health problems, not just mental health challenges. Research from the NIH shows that teens ages, excuse me, teens need nine to ten hours of sleep each night, due to the significant adolescent brain development that they're experiencing. When asked, our students were asked, on an average school night, how many hours of sleep do you get? Over thirty-five percent of Danvers High School students are getting less than six hours of sleep per night, with five percent getting less than four hours of sleep per night. It's important to recognize the negative impact of screen time on sleep, specifically at bedtime. Blue light emitted from smartphones, tablets, and laptops suppress the production of melatonin, which is a hormone that promotes sleep. This is something that Amanda, myself, Emily, other social workers talk with our students directly about, when we talk about sleep challenges. We often say things like, when you charge your battery with sleep, your phone should be charging its battery, and perhaps outside your bedroom. So, when asked during the past thirty days, how often were you hungry, but didn't eat because there wasn't enough food in your home, two percent of Danvers High School students went hungry, and that looks like, out of a survey of six hundred and ninety-eight students, about fourteen of our students go hungry each night. When asked, how, how much do you agree or disagree that you feel close to people at your school, looking at school connectedness, overall, forty-eight percent of our Danvers High School students felt connected, however, when broken down by race, twenty-five percent of our Black students, thirty percent of our Hispanic and Latino students, and only twenty-eight percent of our LGBTQ students reported that they felt connected at our high school. When looking at trusted adults in our community, we asked, when asked, excuse me, we asked if they had people in their lives who were important that they could talk to when they had a problem. We noted that students in grade twelve felt that they were much more likely to reach out to a teacher than students in our grade nine. There's a lot of clicking on this one. So, when asked if they felt that they were sometimes, most of the time, or always treated badly or unfairly in school in the past year, eight percent of our student body said yes, because of their race or ethnicity. Six percent said yes, because of their gender identity, and five percent said yes, because of their sexual orientation. In recognizing that eighty percent of our students at Danvers High School identify as white, when breaking that down by race, the survey shows that twenty-two point five percent of our Black, Hispanic, and Latino students reported unfair treatment at school, based on their race and ethnicity. And while male and female students reported low discrimination based on their gender identity, forty-two percent of our transgender students reported unfair treatment at school, based on their gender identity. When asked during the past twelve months, have you been bullied on school property, or electronically, overall, sixteen percent of Danvers High School students reported they were bullied at school, and eighteen electronically. However, there were statistically significant differences, when looking at the following demographic groups. For our transgender students, thirty-seven percent reported bullying on school property, and thirty-six percent reported electronic bullying. Our LGBTQ population reported at thirty-four percent bullying on school property, and thirty-seven percent reported electronic bullying. And when we're looking at emotional support, fifty-one percent of Danvers High School students felt that they needed to talk with someone. They were asked, during the last twelve months, have you felt the need to talk to someone about how you're feeling, how things were going in your life, or problems that you may have had? This is significant for our LGBTQ students, who at eighty-four percent reported that they were significantly more likely to feel the need to talk with someone, and our transgender students, who reported at sixty-four percent that they were more likely to speak with
Okay, so moving on to mental health, so, Dan, if you could, thank you, okay. So, starting with distress, our students are reporting that twenty-seven percent felt overwhelmed by stress, most of the time, or always. When looking at depression, which is defined as feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for two-plus weeks, twenty-four percent of our students reported having experienced that in the last twelve months. And when looking at self-harm, and let me be clear, this is non-suicidal self-harm, sixteen percent expressed hurting or injuring themselves without wanting to die. When looking at the LGBTQ plus student population rates were significantly higher in all categories, and were significantly more likely than the average high school student to engage in self-harm. When broken down by, by gender, and looking at the LGBTQ community, it was fifty percent harm, self-harm rate, which was sort of a shocking statistic. I will, I do want to note a positive, because I know that this is, it sounds grim in the way that we're presenting it, but depression, sorry, Dan, twenty-four percent, we came in at twenty-four percent, the state average is thirty percent. Actually, that's, that's incorrect, the state average in 2023 was thirty-four percent, so we're almost ten percent lower than the state average in reporting depression. All right, next slide. So now we're into suicidal thoughts. So when asked, during the past twelve months, did you consider attempting suicide, thirteen percent of our students reported that they had considered it. The mass state data is also thirteen percent. For LGBTQ students, it was significantly higher, at thirty-eight percent, which is also consistent with the national data, thirty-nine percent. It drops to nine percent when only looking at DHS students that do not identify in the LGBTQ plus community. Female students, we broke it down that way, it was at thirteen percent, and male students slightly lower, at ten percent. And then when we looked at attempted suicide, it was four percent for the DHS community, which is overall lower than the mass state data, which is at eight percent. For our LGBTQ students, nine percent, which is lower than the national data of twelve percent, and for our male, female students, three percent.
If you just said that.
You've got it.
Nine and three percent for the LGBTQ students?
So, nine percent for the LGBTQ population, and then for our male, female stu-, as far as gender goes, for our students that identify as male or female, it's at three percent.
Is that attempted, or contemplated?
That is for, that's for the attempted rate. Okay, go on, okay, for sexual behavior, students were asked, have you ever had sexual intercourse? Twenty-two percent of DHS students have reported that they had, compared to thirty-seven percent, which is the net mass state data. We did break it down, if you look, by grade nine, ten, eleven, twelve, when we first got the report back, they had the statistics in the reverse, and our social workers had a little panic attack for a second, but this is, this is pretty much in line with what we anticipated, and it was encouraging that we were significantly lower than the mass state average. Okay, so dating violence, DHS students reported that in the past year, someone they were dating, looking at sexual violence, six percent reported that somebody forced them to do sexual things they did not want. Five percent reported that someone they were dating had physically hurt them, and fifteen percent reported that their partner tried to control or emotionally hurt them. We didn't have any statewide comparison data on this one, but we did break it down, I have it right here. If you look at the numbers, sometimes the percentages are hard to get a sense of how many students were talking, but I did break this one down, when you think, when you look at the sexual violence, with a sample of six hundred and ninety-eight students, we're looking at about forty-two students who are reporting, in the past year, having been forced to do something sexual that they did not want to do, and the five percent is closer to, I think, thirty-six or thirty-seven students. Again, there's an increased risk for LGBTQ plus identifying students on dating violence, if you look at these, if you look by gender, as you can see, the yellow bars significantly higher in all categories. And just to clarify, if you, as we broke this down, so LGBTQ plus students encompasses all students that identify either not as straight, cisgender, whereas, when it was looking at just sexual orientation, that does not necessarily, am I getting this right, Laura? Okay, so sexual orientation is strictly preference for sort of romantic connection, whereas gender is really in reference to how they identify, gender-wise. Right, next one? All right, so alcohol use, why does perception matter? So, a teen's perception of their peer's substance use matters significantly, because it can be, it can directly influence their own likelihood of engaging in substance use, as they often feel pressured to conform to perceived social norms within their peer group, leading them to experiment or participate in substance use if they believe their friends are doing so, even if it's not entirely accurate. So these stats, let me explain, because it does look a little confusing. So, students were asked about substance use, alcohol specific in this one, in the past thirty days. In the past thirty days, that's the perception... In the past 30 days, that's the perception graphic. So if you look, 9% of our ninth-grade students said that they had consumed alcohol in the last 30 days. However, they had perceived that 45% of their peers had used alcohol in the last 30 days. 12th grade, same, 30% had used in the last 30 days, whereas they perceived that 85% of their peers were drinking alcohol in the last 30 days, which is a lot. So if you feel like you're like, you know, only one out of 10, every 10 kids that is not drinking, that's, that's a whole lot of peer pressure to be facing. If you look at the stat on the other side, the lifetime use, I know it looks slightly different. Our ninth graders, so what this meant is maybe they didn't use in the last 30 days, but they had experimented with it historically. So ninth grade was lower, 19%, and our 12th grade was higher, at 55%. Go to the next. Okay. So moving on to vape products, which they identify as electronic vapor products. Again, perception versus reality. So if you look at the overall use, so the 11% again is the 30-day, within the last 30 days, our students reported, 11% of them reported actual use. They perceived that 83% of their peers were using. I do want to just note that this survey was given in early October. You know, I, I hope that that wouldn't skew the statistics, but I do imagine particularly our ninth graders, who are just sort of making their way into high school, I do think it will be valuable in the future to sort of take a look at what the spring data might look like to compare to early in the year. Lifetime use, DHS students reported vaping at a higher rate when compared to the mass state data. So even though it was only 11% in the last 30 days, 21% reported that they had used vape products, whereas the mass data is at 12%. Marijuana, set up similarly. Grade nine in the past 30 days, 5% of actual use, but perceived that 41% of their peers were using. And for grade 12, 16% was actual use, whereas they perceived that 77% of their peers were using marijuana in the past 30 days. In terms of lifetime use, DHS students actually reported lower rates when compared to mass state data. So mass state data says 30%, whereas DHS students, it was reported at 20% overall. Okay, so what does this all mean? So taking a lot of this information and thinking about how we use it and how we use that to drive programming and supporting our youth and our families currently, you know, this is all very new information. Historically, we don't have a ton of data. I know we've done the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in the past, but it really wasn't, we don't have a good amount of consistent data to be looking at over the long term. So the hope is, moving forward, we're going to continue to gather this more often. So a couple programs that we have in place right now to help address some of the issues is right now, we have our in-depth program, which is a nicotine cessation intervention program. And what that is, is we have social workers, nurses, and some school counselors in the district who are, have been trained to offer a four-week, four-session class about, it's, it's a prevention intervention program. It can be, you can meet with students individually or as part of a group. And it's also been used as an alternative to suspension. So students who may be caught with a vape product in the bathroom, you know, rather than the traditional route of, you know, having them suspended and being out for a couple of days, we're giving them the option of, hey, let's do this really cool educational program, you might learn something. So on the first offense, they're able to do that rather than it being logged in as a disciplinary infraction. Just quickly, healthy relations this month is Teen Violence Awareness Month. We have a couple of healthy relationships assemblies planned for this week. I'll be finishing up that presentation when I leave here tonight. But our focus really is on friendship. So healthy relationships are so important, but I think more and more what we're really seeing, even in the high school-age students, is that they need a lot of support in developing their social, emotional learning skills. And it starts with friendship. So, Laura?
So as far as future programming by Danvers Cares, as you can tell by the photo, I'm in the middle there, holding Algie, who is a koala bear. He is the youth mental health first aid mascot. I was trained along with four peers of mine at Danvers High School to be an instructor for this program. And it's, it's wonderful, it's thorough, it's been widely successful. We are hoping to train a lot of our staff right in district. And there is hope as well to possibly even partner with, you know, part of the public right in Danvers. So maybe offering to parents or other, you know, important members of our community. So that is coming. And we also have some, some conversations and planning is going on around parent and guardian engagement opportunities. And that's something that we're looking forward to doing.
I also just want to point out, I know this was a lot of data to throw at you. So as the Danvers Cares website, what we'll be doing is Whitney, who is not here tonight, will have, this week, will have this slideshow up on our website so that people can access it there. And also we'll have a link to this portion of the school committee meeting so that people can watch it and us talking it through, through the website. That's it, yeah.
Question is from the committee.
Yeah, I think it's more of a comment. I mean, I wish I could say this data was great. I mean, but the data is, I mean, it's, it's a good baseline, right? But it's, it's shining a light on things that are not necessarily positive in the community, right? So I, I mean, it's good to see some of this stuff that Danvers Cares is doing, but you know, when I look at like feeling a connection to the school, like, how do you do that? Like, I'd love to just hear, and you don't have to comment on it now, if you, if you do, you can. But even for our school system, what can we do outside of Danvers Cares that can help to, to address some of these issues, right?
Yeah, and I actually, that reminds me. So one of the things that was prompted from our last Danvers Cares meeting was surveying students on a trusted adult, not through the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, but we did our own survey within the school. And I actually think it was Wendy from Essex Tech that had sort of talked about how that's something that they do for all of their ninth-grade students, incoming ninth-grade students. I also know that we do it at the Holton Richmond. It's like pretty standard, yep, they do it at the, okay. Mary's giving me the nod that I'm correct. So we did that actually recently. And students were asked also to identify their safe adults in the building, which is really connected to students feeling a sense of belonging and connectedness in the school. So we haven't yet taken that data and acted on it, but the goal is to identify all the students who did not, were not able to identify trusted adults and ensuring that we are doing everything we can to make those connections. And also recognizing the trusted adults that have been identified to, to allow for them to really see the impact that they're having. So that's one of many. We also have our community blocks. We're trying to implement much more SEDL programming, exciting things happening. But yeah, it's a, it's a really hard one.
And do, we're going to do this again in the spring also, is that what you said?
Well, so right now, we're planning to do it at, we're going to administer the YRBS at Holton Richmond this spring. And then what we had talked about, and Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that moving forward, we're really going to align, we wanted to get this done early because we were excited about it and we wanted the data and we wanted to be able to take the data and make some really educated decisions about programming. Moving forward, the hope is that we'll align it to be in the spring for the high school and the middle school moving forward. So we're getting, gathering all that data together consistently.
Yeah, it'd be great to see trends too. What does this do year over year and over three years, five years, things like that? Great, thank you.
And I, I think if I may, to your point, is the data, this really is the baseline. The, the survey was administered with a third-party vendor that works with multiple coalitions throughout the state. So, you know, unfortunately, we just haven't, for whatever reason, have done this data. So it's hard for us to really get trends and see where things have been. I don't remember the last time that this was administered. And it's full soup. I think it was done in abbreviated chunks over time. It is what it is. So at least we have this now to keep working. I think your question about connectivity is one of the things we all believe in. And it's, it's the community block, but it's also those little things, like you talked about the newsies here at the middle school and finding niches for, for kids and working at the middle school because that does continue to the high schools well. Anything that's involved, clubs, groups, all those are great items, but, and there's a lot of great connections. But I know, and that's the thing I also asked the team to do, is like, look at the state data and start to look at the coalition, because when you look at it alone, it's like, wow, some of this, it's like, wow, where is this? But I think you got to put it in perspective too, knowing that we got a lot of work to do, but we have done a lot of work. So it's really hard unless you have further data.
Anyone else?
So when you talk about coalition work around this issue, I, I can report very favorably and very positively of my first Danvers Cares meeting. There were 23 people in the room at this meeting. So kudos to Amanda and Laura for getting the word out and getting people in. And a lot of our conversation was about people doing work, but doing work separately. And so how does this network or coalition connect in ways to, to drive guardian engagement so that rich conversations are happening, how to have them at home and in places where, you know, these conversations obviously aren't happening, even amongst themselves? So it was a very positive meeting. The room was full, a lot of great ideas, and hopefully that will continue. And I would just have to be, be in that room. So, thank you.
Thanks, man. Yeah, thanks for coming.
Well, first of all, what is the confidence statistically in the responses? And what I mean is, is there a margin of error where students are not potentially telling the truth either way in most tests like this or most surveys? There's sort of a baseline, yeah, we assume 3% are, are not accurate, or there's a margin of error of X percent. Is, is that the case here?
I mean, I don't, we don't have the exact numbers of what that looks like, but there is a margin of error. And remember, this is all student report, right? So this isn't based on our observations, this is students reporting. So yes. However, I will say, this has been a survey that has been used since the mid-'90s and, you know, through the CDC, who originally developed it. And they really feel the data, the data is more accurate, I know, in general than people would believe it to be. Surprisingly, especially in the way that we framed it to students, we were really careful about ensuring their confidentiality and, and that they wouldn't be identified. We did a ton of pre-work to make sure the students felt safe and comfortable answering honestly.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect it to be off by multiples, but I think it'd be like a baseline, eh, could be, could be off here or there. Second question now, for example, there was a question, questions were asked about sexual activity. Was there a question asked about birth control? How many of the students who are sexually active are using birth control?
And Laura, you can step in anytime. So when we were going through the survey, working with the company that, the consulting firm that worked with us, they, we had sort of a standard survey that we, I think there were like 100 questions that came on the basic survey. And then we were able to add questions in the areas that we were particularly interested in. I think when we first went through it, we had like 180 questions we were really interested in. So we had to cut them down. We did, I think we got it down to like 123 questions. I would love to ask more about, you know, whether they're using protection and what their understanding of sexually transmitted diseases are. One of the things that has come out of this that I realized is we're getting this like baseline data, but now we can use this to ask, to gather our own data as a community. So there are other ways for us to gather our own data, to collect the information that feels like it's missing here. I do want to add quick, we also didn't include stuff about, the information about screen time, because that was another one that we felt like it just wasn't giving us enough information. And I think we need to ask some more targeted questions around social media use and how often kids are online and how they're using that time.
Okay. And I want to get back to, from a data standpoint, the questions about suicide. Suicide, so I want to make sure I'm right about this. The report says, self-reported, LGBTQ students, 9% report that they have attempted suicide. That strikes me as a crisis number. And I feel that way, even if the state, even if that's below the state average, then that just means the state average is terrible too. It seems to me, and this is really, first of all, not for, you guys did a great job on the survey. And what Danvers Cares is doing is vitally important, so don't take anything I say as a, but as a group, we've got to recognize this is a serious issue and find ways to address this directly and through Danvers Cares, but also any way that we can. That is a critical number. Almost 10% of a discrete group has attempted suicide. That terrifies me.
I think it terrifies us all, Eric and, and, you know, I know that we have the SOS program that we've implemented in the schools, which is an awareness and the screening way that we work with students, but it is, it's concerning.
I mean, I'm wondering if, and again, throwing ideas out there, but you know, if we find a way to do workshops with parents and, you know, maybe it's aimed at parents of LGBTQ students and just, you know, anything we can do to support the families, because we can't do it all. Clearly, a lot of what happens, happens outside of the schools, whether it's the bullying, whether, whatever it is, it's not all happening within the school. And, but if we can support the parents and families who are facing these issues in a way that helps bring that number down in any way, that's a win. That's a real win and that's something that should be a goal, I think, for us.
Yep, agree a thousand percent.
I mean, to pontificate, that's a scary thing.
And I think, and I know Mr. Shan has a question, but one of the things that we're working on is more outreach with families. And that's, that's an area that we know is missing. And there's some recent work that was done and we'll continue to do that. So that is the key, is to provide resources as well for families and for anybody.
So valuable.
One quick question. Do you know if it's happening or is there a plan for it to happen, to share this data with, say, health, health classes to help drive the conversation, the lesson? You know, I know the ninth graders have to take help, I believe, so. Is this data shared with those, and I know not everyone is equipped, maybe to have, to facilitate lessons on some of these topics because they are delicate, but I'm wondering, is, is the data even shared with our students?
So it's interesting you say that, because I've been trying to figure out, we had talked about sharing it with students. I do think, I want to be, we want to be really intentional about that and what the setting is for that. Originally, we had talked about maybe presenting it sort of in small chunks, right? Maybe you want to speak to that, Laura, she had?
Well, I mean, I think the, the conversation is that this is important and this is valuable and how do we want to disperse this information out? You know, so there are a lot of conversations that are, that are occurring to try to figure out the most thoughtful way that we can do that. But just to specifically answer what you had asked, our health classes do do the signs of suicide, SOS program. So that curriculum has been in use and each of us typically will go down, introduce ourselves to those ninth-grade health classes prior to the start of that so that they can see our face, hear our voice, learn a little bit about what we do and who we see in the building, know where we're located so that they, you know, should they have an experience while they're learning these, you know, difficult topics, that they'll have a face to recall and a person to speak with.
I also just, I know that Drew Betts just recently, you know, asked us to share the data with him. I know that he's been talking about using it to drive some decisions. I don't know the specifics of that and if that's related to the health curriculum or if he wanted to use it. It is, okay, yes. It is, okay, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's appreciated.
You got it. I also just feel like I have to end on saying that Danvers is doing amazing things. We've got awesome kids and the majority of them are feeling connected and loved and like they belong and, you know, I just want to make sure that I.
I think that's an important clarification because when you look at the data as a standalone, you know, but it's a start. And I remember when just asking, should we do the survey? I'm like, of course we should do the survey. But you have to recognize that start from, you know, ground zero, but we do have so many great things happening and great connections, but we can always improve.
Thank you.
Next up, and I'm not going to belabor the points, I want to get moving. Our policy subcommittee met back in January. Just to give a quick update on five areas we discussed, composite determination, we'll talk about that later tonight, but certainly it is needed because of the MCAS requirement no longer being part of graduation requirement. Number two, we brought, we discussed the library material selection adaption policy that actually was implemented here in 2006. And just looking to make sure that our informal and formal considerations in terms of any challenges, you know, any revisions we need to make, that, that, that will be coming and we'll bring that to the school committee at a later date. The transportation policy, now that we have vehicles that are non-7D, which means transportation by our staff to extracurricular events or even during the school day, we need to put together protocols and qualification guidelines for that, where that's in progress. We've shared that with our attorney, we'll bring that back next month. The entrance age, we had a family outreach just to bring this to the school committee for discussion, which I'll bring this into a later meeting. But the bottom line is with the entrance age is that the policy itself states that kindergarten, you know, must be five years old or older before September 1. That's the cutoff and into grade one, that is the same for six years old on September 1. And that's important because that's always difficult. You may have individual situations that, when you weigh into it, but when you're looking at the whole, that, that is always the discussion piece. So that'll be coming further for discussion. And then school choice, as we each year enter into a hearing for participation or not, you know, is this the year to take a good, hard look at? Is school choice an option for us? And we just talked about the actual policy itself, just understand the parameters. So when, when I do bring the deep dive into whether we should do this or not, we understand all the policy implications. So that's it on the policy subcommittee update.
Questions, concerns, anything to add? All right, thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
So new business, monthly budget report. Here comes Pam.
Good evening, everybody. So this month's budget report is not exceedingly different than last month was. There have been some small adjustments that were made to the projections that we were looking at for the overages in special ed transportation. That number's actually gone down a little bit. And the contracted services number hasn't changed a whole lot, but the, there was an offset that was identified. One of the reasons it was over by the amount it was was because we are using contracted services to replace some work that would typically be done by one of the staff members. That it's an unfilled position right now. And so that salary savings can be used to offset the overage in contracted services so it is not an overall deficit in the budget that needs to, it has an offset now. But I mean, other than that, we're largely in the same place we were last month for, you know, as we continue to work to try to get a handle on the transportation costs and, and other pieces. It kind of still is what it is.
Questions for, yeah. My only question is that clearly the special ed budget and transportation is a challenge, no question. And we're up on the cost of instructional assistance, which I take largely arising from the contract, which we needed to do and was reasonable. Are you content that we're going to be able to meet those three areas of challenge? And, or do we need certain help? Do we need, do you anticipate need from the town?
No, I, I mean, I think we'll be able to successfully navigate the FY25 year, closing out the budget and everything. I mean, part of that is because we do have certain resources that are still available to us through the emergency assistance funding that we have gotten from the state and the circuit breaker reserve, even though we are digging a little bit deeply into it, more deeply than we would maybe prefer, it does offer us continued flexibility to close the gap on some of these things. I will be keeping an eye on, and I'm not sure, you won't really know this until the end, but you know, those, those reimbursements that come from the state for transportation. We've talked a lot about the transportation for special education, that through circuit breaker, that reimbursement. But they also, the McKinney Vento of transportation is reimbursed based on last year's end of year report. I was kind of crunching some numbers while I was waiting to come up. And the reimbursement the last couple of years has hovered around 80%. It's been as high as 100% a couple of years ago. The last two years, it's been about 80%. And if that were to hold true again, that would be $150,000 that would come in at the end of this year that we could use to help close these gaps that we see. So that's the kind of stuff you don't really know until it all kind of comes to fruition and you see that payment notification that that money is coming. But I'm, I'm still fairly confident that we'll be able to navigate FY25. It's just, you know, getting a, getting a better handle on some, controlling some of these costs in future years.
Well, thank you, Pam. It's important work you're doing and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Assistant superintendent interview at long last.
Well, we'd like to bring Kristin Anderson to the table, and I'd like to provide an introduction. And before I do that, though, I, I want to thank our search committee for the work that they did. It was a great process. Julie Pastodak and Brian Riley chaired that committee, and it was a great cross-section of administrators, school committee member, Mike Shannon, parents, you name it, we had them on there. Admin assistant, which I think is important because the assistant superintendent cuts across multiple stakeholders. So that process was great, but we also had a strong second round with my administrative team, our administrative team, I should say. Then we had the public virtual presentation, which we had over 90 participate in that. So that was outstanding, and they provided some outstanding feedback, and that was very useful. We brought back that second round search committee to really dive deep into that data. And then we came upon individual meetings with myself and the finalists. And then from there, a real deep dive into the background checks, the reference checks. And those were quite extensive. And then we asked Kristin for some more, as we did. And, you know, we're very pleased to present Kristin as the finalist. But I do want to say that one of the other finalists, Peter DiMauro, did an outstanding job. He's our acting high school principal, longtime curriculum director, teacher at Danvers High School. He's just done it all. He's an outstanding leader. He did a great job to the process, and I think we're very lucky to have Peter in our district and continuing to do so as we transition the principalship. And he'll be back in a curriculum director role next year, and he's really eager to hit the ground running with that. But I just want to give a special thanks to him for extending his leadership into this particular round. It was an outstanding round of applicants and very strong. But Peter's very well respected by all. Myself personally respect him a great deal, and I just wanted to make that public, you know, just make this known publicly of his strong candidacy, but also the willingness and understanding that we are building, I think, an outstanding administrative team, and he's part of that, and we're grateful for that. And also grateful that we have Kristin here, and we're very pleased to present her. And, you know, again, we provided an update to the community today, and I gave that to the school committee over the weekend, but we, and you've seen her resume, over 33 years of experience. Through each individual phone call by myself and others, it was clear that she has not only the experience, but the ability to work with multiple stakeholders in such a way that she builds collaboration, right? She builds that feeling of trust. She really understands data and how to move data, but also understands the dynamics of a community. And she's been in different communities and in different leadership roles, so it's very clear that she knows how to work with a multiple stakeholder group, but she also has a strong understanding of curriculum, a very strong understanding of, at all three levels. And I think that's important. Professional development is a strength of hers, but also getting into looking at how a district moves and how she can best align and keep that movement going forward. And I think that's important. You know, there's always the thinking of an outsider coming in and how that will look. And the feedback from all of the references was that she does this very well with grace, and everybody was very sad to see her go, but very happy for this opportunity. So again, I'm very pleased to bring her forward as our finalist, and I'll turn this over to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, Kristin. We're excited to have you here. Now that you've seen this rogues' gallery in action, do you still want the job? Okay, that's good to know. So we're going to go through a, a round of questions. There may be follow-up questions, so I am going to start with Mr. Shannon. We'll start down that end and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Kristin, I wonder if you would tell me or us, what steps will you take to familiarize yourself with the specific needs and challenges of Danvers?
Action? New microphone? I'm so excited. I have been welcomed here. I think I've had five interviews. I think 25 people that I've worked with have been called, something extraordinary. And every step along the way, I've felt a warm, generous community coming through that wants to succeed and sort of be at the top of its game. And all the pieces are there for, for that to be true. So in terms of an entry plan, I think is what you're asking me about. I'm smiling because after 11 years in Concord and Concord Carlisle, I led committees that hired all, all the principals. So five principals and gave them one book, which was how to write an entry plan book. And it went through five components of how you really get to know a community, and that's what I would do, basically follow those. So I've been doing some of it already, which is the first component, which is to look at every piece of data out there. There's a lot of public data. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a lot of data on socioeconomics, on academic achievement. You heard some on socio-emotional well-being, but all of those pieces, what are the languages spoken in the, and so forth, all of those pieces. As you see from my resume, I'm an economist and a mathematician by training. So I actually like the data and love to dig into it. So I've noticed some things in the MCAS, for example, or your I-Ready scores, which are your internal achievement that I can suss out. So that, first of all, getting to know it sort of numerically, the lay of the land. And then the really big part is starting to get to know all the stakeholders and building relationships. So I want to, you know, talk to all of the administrators in depth. Where are you in your career? How can I support you? How can I help you? Because that's, that's what I see my job as. My job is to do whatever Dan tells me to do. That is really my job, but to know where each of the leaders of the buildings are and where they want to grow and where they see their community growing, and then within their communities, help them by getting to know all their stakeholders. There's formal stakeholders, curriculum developers, vice principals, there's counselors, but there's also informal. Who are, who's, who are the staff members that other staff members really listen to when decisions are made? And what connections and sort of personal relationship can I build with them to put money in the bank so that when big decisions come along, I can be right there and holding a group together to make the really important decisions? And just to underscore how important an entry plan is, I would say I went into Concord and Concord Carlisle with that in mind. And then maybe seven years later, it really fruit came to bear, if you will, because we had to reinvent education during the pandemic. And I had probably seven or eight people who were staying overnight at the end of February with me in 2020, and we were literally reinventing what education was going to look like in two weeks, not in a year, but, you know. So those relationships probably are the most important thing. I also think sort of, you know, lastly, coming in from the outside, not being from Danvers, I can hold that objective lens and say, okay, 4% suicide ideation is a real problem. And, you know, you can mention it, then you can manage it. I give the district such kudos for, for giving the youth risk behavior survey in the first place, because if you can mention it, you can manage it. Now you can come up with that list, and I started listing them. Here are all the things that can be done, you know, but you need the data. So just objectively coming in and saying, this is a real strength. Look at these science scores, you know, or whatever it is. How can we build, what's happening there that we can build off of in other areas? So I would say those, those pieces. But there is a entry plan book, and I do follow it, and I do create a report. Yeah. Sure, happy to answer it.
Josh.
Thank you. So you sort of answered my original question, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump around a little bit, but you touched upon this a little bit in your answer, but can you describe your leadership style and how it aligns to the goals of the Danvers School District?
Yeah, so I hope to be someone who leads from the middle. So I have this sort of idea in my mind because I have five kids and we've watched a lot of movies together of like the Super Friends coming in together. And so I'm just in the middle of the Super Friends. I'm not leading the Super Friends. And, you know, it's your formal and your informal leaders, and you just get them together. And you know each other well enough that you can just bounce ideas off each other, not judge somebody, you know, it's the content, not the person you're talking about. So it's very collaborative leadership style. I will say in some incident, especially when I was a school principal, there are some decisions that you, you just have to make. You're in the moment. It's a fire alarm, for example, or, you know, something violent is happening. That calls for, I need to come in, I need to bring my best thinking at that moment, talk to the few people that I can, but a decision needs to be made quickly. But most decisions, especially the ones that we're talking about here, curricular decisions and so forth, are collaborative decisions because if you have these big committees, like the 22 members who interviewed, you know, interviewed me, you're getting buy-in from all of those people because they were involved and they had a stake in, in the choice that was made. So the collaborative leadership style is the most successful sort of down the road as well. But also, I just like to talk to people, so. And I'm a huge sports fan, so if anybody's a huge sports fan, I'd love to talk sports.
Thank you, Kristin.
Sure.
Josh.
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I just want to thank you for mentioning the Super Friends. It's my favorite cartoon and shit. So 100% Saturday mornings, but. How would you engage with the teachers and the staff at the ground level to better understand their challenges and ensure that their voices are heard as part of district decision making?
Yeah, so I would say three ways I would engage with staff. The first is, and I don't know what happens here now, so I would have to talk with Dan about that, but formally, I, right now, meet monthly with the union leadership, and we just try to circumvent any problems before they become big. So, you know, I'll bring up, okay, let's talk about next year's calendar, like in November, you know, much earlier. And we talk about personnel things, if that's what's done, you know, all the things before they become big issues. I try to get a lay of the land of, you know, we're thinking about adopting a new ELA curriculum in two years. What might you see as a process? You know, what might you see as a makeup of a committee or something like that? So that's like the formal, you know. I do hold a. I do hold a big stake that administration and teachers unions working together actually does make things better for student achievement. Then I mentioned as part of my entry plan, I like to talk to principals and work really with principals because they're the leader of their building. So in my first year, I would set up, what I've done in Norset right now, is set up weekly times to walk around each building with each principal. And so we go into about 45 minutes. We go into different set of classrooms, and I start to get to know the teaching styles. I get to know some of the people. And then eventually, that's just me walking around alone. And I love how the central office is in the high school. I love that here. I've never had that before, so I always have to factor in the travel time. But just walking around and talking to people. I made the mistake in my first couple of years of doing it of always going to the same school at the same time. So I always see like the fifth graders in art, but I never saw them doing science, for example. So now I switch it up. So I have a week A and a week B schedule for doing that. And my assistant just knows that's sacrosanct, like we just don't mess with it unless there's some emergency coming up. But yeah, I just make sure to get out there. People know who I am. I used to call myself a visible principal when I was a principal, but I was a visible assistant superintendent, you know, just the relaxed sideline talk. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going rogue.
Yes.
And what I mean is that these questions that we've worked on, they're technical and how would you do this and how would you do that? And Dan and the search team has already really vetted that. So my interest is in, is in your interest. Lots of people start out, they become teachers, and 30-something years later, they retire as a teacher and they've had a great career. You chose to move into the administration of schools. And what made you choose that? What was in your heart that filled that desire for you to become an administrator as opposed to staying in the classroom directly?
So the kind of sarcastic answer is, I was trying to build a school at home by having five kids, but it didn't work. So I had to become a school administrator. No, I think in general, I had an elementary school principal who, you know, was from a very destitute area, Capitol Hill in Washington, DC. I mean, we were so far below the poverty level. Nobody didn't have free and reduced lunch. And yet he, having come from the community, really raised us up. We were the students, first of all, I knew where he lived, I'd been to his house, but we just knew he cared about us. He entered us into multiple contests. I think I won the DC Science Fair like five years in a row. And there weren't that many entries, you know. It was, it was a public, urban public school system that was failing at the time. But he just drove and drove to make us achieve more than our potential. And I saw that power that he had over, you know, our lives and the positive piece he could have. So he's in my mind all the time. Yeah. And what I found honestly as a teacher was that I was working all summer anyway. And so working all summer as an administrator didn't really bother me. I was taking on all the roles. I was the mentor facilitator when I was a teacher. I was the head of the math department, and then I became the K-12 head of the math. Like I just kept taking on more and more roles to have more and more impact. And that was very satisfying.
Thank you.
Yeah. That wasn't that rogue.
Well, it's rogue enough. I'm a rebel, as everybody knows. Yeah, follow-up, Mike.
When we, community looks at your resume, your body of work is very impressive.
Thank you.
What jumps out is you spent 12 years at Concord Carlisle.
Yeah.
Made the decision to leave there and go to Norset for one year. And now you're sitting here. So would you mind sharing with us and whoever's watching and listening, will listen and watch, what motivated you to make this leap from, you know, you established a Concord Carlisle, go do a year at Norset, and here you are sitting, and you're sitting there for a reason, very good reason. But could you just share with everyone why that is?
Yeah. So three reasons why I would leave Concord and Concord Carlisle after, as you say, a very successful career there. I facilitated the establishment of two strategic plans, two five-year strategic plans. And when it became the fifth year of the second one, the last year, I'm sitting there realizing we've achieved all of our goals, and they were pretty high-y gold. So I could do more, but I couldn't, we had grown as much as we could grow under my leadership. And I just felt time for a new, a change. The other thing is that Concord and Concord Carlisle are extremely well-resourced district. So we both had a lot of support in the community, as Danvers does, super high per pupil expenditure. But then we also had the Concord Education Fund, which gave us literally millions every year. So there was almost nothing that we couldn't do with good planning. And I felt like through that sort of generous community, I became able to figure out what were the levers that actually make a difference in students' lives and help them maximize their potential and wanting to take that to a less well-advantaged community. You know, as the retirement system works here, I had already established a pretty high salary in Concord, so that's what salary that I'll retire on. So that wasn't as much of an issue. So I just really was looking for a community that had all the pieces at play that were going to make a district realize their potential, but they weren't there yet. And here I feel, Norset had all of those. It had great leader, very supportive community, MCAS scores that were about average, but the bulk of students who were needs improvement were just under average. And that's not a hard lift. That's a pretty easy lift. And what I didn't expect after I went to Norset was that my five kids and my husband would not like me away from home in Newton for five days out of the week. So I turned to my youngest, I think it was maybe November, and I said, how are you doing? She's a junior in high school at Newton North. And I said, how are you doing with me away? And her eyes just filled up with tears, and that was kind of the end of that story. I went to my superintendent, Brooke Clenchey, who is wonderful, and I told her, and she said, whatever you need to do, I'm going to support you. So we, she gave me a long list of tasks to rewrite the handbook, the emergency plan, the de-cap, the, you know, just things that, policies and procedures that weren't in place or they were so old, they needed to be updated. And I've just been checking down and working with committees since then. And so I think I've done about 15 of them already and about five more to go. Yeah. Does that answer your question? Yeah. Yeah.
Any other follow-up? No. All right. Thank you for answering our questions, for being forthright.
My pleasure.
And I think we'll have you step out if you don't mind, or we'll have Mary escort you, and then we'll deliberate a little bit and call you back shortly.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions from anybody on the committee in terms of what you think, your impression?
I was just going to say, I think it's, it's hard to really interview somebody for 15 minutes here and get a, get a really good feel, but I do trust, I trust the process. She's been through, you know, a lot of it. But I did like a lot of her answers, especially like around the leadership, how we lead from the middle and collaborative leadership style, also with her entry plan. I thought she had some really good details. So I would support her candidacy.
Okay.
I'm happy to jump in. I had the advantage of being on the initial committee and got to see everybody. But at the end of that night, or two days actually, I had Kristen and Peter in my top two. Her body of work is incredibly impressive. Her references put to rest a lot of concerns, and I tried to address that in our last question, how did you end up here in Danvers? I just think from the position of bringing in just talent, she checks that box in a big way.
Sean.
I mean, reading through her resume and just meeting her, she's got all, checks all the boxes of having the background, having achievements, and very personable love. So I feel that that's a combination of somebody that this town needs, somebody that every town needs, but we'll take it. You can have somebody who can check the first two boxes, but if they're not willing to be personable, I feel that that's a little bit of an edge she was able to just fit right in. I think that she would be a great candidate.
Yeah, I agree with everything everyone said. Nothing that she said in this interview process in any way said, made me say myself, yeah, not the right person. No. I think she'll be a great fit. And I've also always been a believer in the sort of Bill Parcells approach, which is, we're asking you to make the dinner, and you need to have, you know, pick the ingredients, so to speak. And I have great faith, based on the hiring I've seen already, that if you, if this is the person you come to us and recommend, unless there's some red flag out there, and there certainly isn't here, then I'm supportive. I say, I say we, like, I'll vote for it. I support it. Any comments from you before we take a motion and a vote?
Thank you for asking that, Mr. Crane. To your point, you know, I think the process was very strong. And we, I'm very grateful for the support of the school committee to allow us to go through the process. And having Mike sit in there for school committee was the ability to be able to share information back and forth. And, you know, we were blessed to have such a strong pool of candidates. We had almost 40 overall. I know many very qualified didn't even receive an interview because you just can't interview everybody. And as the process went, it just became very clear Kristen was there, as well as Peter too, as I mentioned earlier. But just the follow-up on all the references, it was like almost too good to be true. Check those boxes of like, why leave Concord, why leave Norset? All those pieces because we want to build the best team here. And I'm looking to really learn and match with somebody's style as well. You know, there's a lot to the assistant superintendent's job, there really is. But also, how can we continue to build? And I really am intrigued by her Concord background, you know, because that is a high-performing district. And I know we have so many great things in place here. We have some awesome people, and teachers are working really hard. Can she bring an outside perspective and look at what we're doing for ways to keep pushing student achievement while working within our, what we have, right? Bringing that lens in. And she has a strong equity lens too, which is important. So I think through that whole process, you know, and just keep digging down and looking like, and even just checking social media and all those things, just, everything just matched up very strongly here. And it was, you know, very, it's like, we want to bring in the best. We really do. And I think your point is very well taken, Sean. Somebody that can work with everybody, you know. And yeah, there are times for the tough decisions. I get that. But, you know, like Kristen mentioned, there's a lot of things that just have to get done, as you know, married us. So just having that institutional knowledge, it's going out the door, bring somebody aboard that can bring people together. And I think we're blessed by being able to keep Peter as well. I think it's just, yeah. Again, I want to note my appreciation to the committee, and we've vetted this one very deeply. So I feel very confident that this is a very strong candidate. I think she'll, our district will benefit from her expertise.
All right. So with that, we're going to do two motions. And the first motion is going to be to offer Kristen the job. And the second motion will then be to authorize, because we signed the contract. So we, what I would suggest is that Dan come to us with a proposed contract. But since we're technically the one signing, we'll make a motion to have Dan recommend the job. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So with that, I'll accept the motion to offer Kristen the assistant superintendency, subject to a successful contract negotiation. Anyone want to make that motion?
A motion that we offer Kristen the job.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. That motion carries. And second, I'll accept the motion to ask the superintendent to come back to the committee in a reasonable time with a proposed contract, having negotiated same with Kristen. Someone want to make that motion? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's also a vote. I'll go get a copy. We probably have another hour of questions that we need to ask you, so settle in. No.
Get started.
We have taken a vote, and I am very pleased to tell you that we want to welcome you to the Danvers School District as our new assistant superintendent.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. I think we're going to be, you're going to be a great addition, and we all feel that. We also agreed that Dan would work on negotiating the contract with you, and he'll come back to us with his recommendation. And other than that, we look forward to you joining us.
Oh, thank you so much.
Do you have any questions for us at this point?
Millions. Really more for this lady sitting next to me. I was just picking her brain.
There you go.
She's wonderful.
It's a wonderful brain to pick. She has been, you know, we love Mary. Mary has done so much for us, and as you may know, served as interim superintendent for a year and really kept this district going. We can't thank her enough. But there are big shoes to fill, but we have a feeling you're going to fill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's going to be great. It's going to be great.
It will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Back to the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we're going to move into the last portion, if I have that correct, which is recommending the first reading of the competency determination policy, which I put in the folder, the slideshow and...
and also an updated document. I had Peter Demaro, the DHS principal, along with Mary Wormers and the team review the document. They did make some updates to the specific document. I want to make a point to those areas that are highlighted. As we know, that the competency determination, so they basically made the difference or the distinguishment between 2003 to 2026. 2003, when MCAS began, the class of 2026. So we know that MCAS was part of that competency determination. So if students have completed that piece, they've met the competency determination. That included the credits that are required for graduation would be the diploma, right? But we also know that beyond the class of 2027, we know that DESI and the Board of Education, they're working right now on, there could be changes to this. So our feeling is that let's keep it basic. It's roughly the same document as before with the competency determination. So if they did not pass MCAS, you know, then it falls back to two years of science completion, two years of math, two years of English, right? Which are the basic, as we equate it to with the sophomore year would be, take the MCAS. Keep it as simple as that because this allows us flexibility if things change and also knowing that we're developing our portrait of the learner. So there may be connections further down the road to those competencies that we've been talking about. So again, on this particular slide, which is the change to the draft, is that we've classified 2003, 2026. So if somebody did not pass, they did not graduate, which there are very few, you know, obviously if they've met this, they can give them a diploma and we'll do the best outreach that we possibly can to ensure that. All of our courses are already aligned to DESI standards as they are, right? And again, we have a piece in place where if they didn't meet the requirement, ways we can monitor and help them make, pass the courses. So my recommendation is for the first reading of the updated competency determination policy. I think it's important that we do the first and the second so that it's in place before the end of the year.
All right. So first of all, is there a motion to approve this policy for first reading?
A motion, so move.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Discussion and questions. Sean? Josh? Mike? No? Yeah, I took a look at this and it's just a, it's clear to me, it's a way to make sure that we're meeting the state requirement along with our own requirements, so is that focus on math and literacy. And I think it makes perfect sense until, you know, if and when the state comes down and makes some changes, which is entirely possible. All right, any further discussion? All right. So with that, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving the policy for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, carries.
Thank you. The next piece, and this is in your folder as well, is we're to that point to look at the calendar for next year. So I don't have a slide or whatever for that presentation, but Janet worked together the proposed calendar and virtually the same as this year's calendar, where we moved one of the professional development days to January. We also moved one of the early release days, beginning of the year, to December. The difference is where the December break begins because of where the falling of Christmas. So it's not as clean as it was last year, where the 20th, on that Friday, we had the early release and then we were done. There was research done with most districts and they're looking at the 23rd is that early release day, then you jump into your December break. If you look on the backside of the break in January, you know, where the 2nd falls on a Friday, you know, it just doesn't make any sense to come back into school that Friday and just start clean with the week. So you kind of make up that day. It's not a makeup, it's just the way that the calendar falls. It'll change over the next couple of years. And that we did work with the union and talk with them in terms of, did they like where that professional development day fell on January? And we all feel that that's a great point. It was well-received because it's a nice midpoint. It does break up that weekend of Martin Luther King. So we're going to, they said, yep, we'll continue that, no problem. So it's pretty stock and standard. So if you have any questions or what have you had to.
So we have a motion to approve the proposed calendar for first reading?
Motion to approve for the first reading.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there? I'm sorry.
No, no, I apologize for interrupting. I don't know, do we necessarily need to have two readings unless it's policy?
Oh, fair point. We are, yeah, I guess I'm going back in time, but okay. So that's just an advisory presentation. Okay, fair enough. So.
And I was going to offer, if you needed me to do any of the research and, you know, to vote next month or whatever, but it's pretty stock.
That's fine.
I would just, one quick point of discussion.
Sure.
That December 22nd is probably going to be a light day for attendance, I would imagine in the Dandres School District with two clean, like you're looking at two weeks vacation, but that coming back for that Monday, that's going to be a tough one, so. And a half day Tuesday, right? So just some food for thought, but it doesn't look like it's going to change.
All right. So we will move on to the order of business.
We can take a vote, all right?
I'm sorry? If you want, take a vote. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
We need a motion. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for the 25, 26 school calendar.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second, and this is for final approval? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a vote. Order of business, consent agenda. So this would be to approve the homeschool requests, fundraising requests, the HRMS library donation, for which we are very grateful, and the personnel memo. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there questions on any of the items on the agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none. Do you want to talk about the contribution at all, or the donation rather? Pardon me if I put you on the spot.
No, you didn't put me on the spot, but, you know, certainly the check and, again, just want to be careful that, you know.
Of course.
But for the recognize, 75th birthday and, you know, that generous donation that's needed for teachers and students is always a lovely thing.
We appreciate that. Anytime someone does that, it thinks of us that way. It's a very nice thing. So thank you. Okay, minutes. As secretary, I'll move that we approve and release the minutes from the January 13th, 2025, and approve but not release the minutes from the January 13th, 2025. Both of those are executive sessions. No, strike that. The January 13th, 2025, regular meeting minutes to approve and release, but to approve and not release the January 13th, 2025 executive session minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dan, do we have any communications? We have no communications this month. Legislation, I think Sally and Dylan and Mike covered it, so it was amazing they all three were here and there was some great discussion there, which we appreciate. Any subcommittee liaison updates?
I think I gave my Dandres kids one earlier.
Yep.
So.
We'll have that. And you talked about the Dandres Unification Inclusion Commission event on Saturday night.
Yes.
That was really terrific, so I think that covers that. Any other subcommittees to report? No? All right. So before we adjourn, our next meeting is on the 24th, that is our budget hearing. And beyond that, unless anyone has anything else to bring before the committee, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. It carries. Good night, Dandres.